Okay Ah, I don't know, I have a thumbnail for this, it's okay. We are improvising. Okay. Hmm, okay, I believe everything is, oh, whoa, hold on. Is everything good? Let me check my cloud bot in the loop. Now everything is good. Probably. Hi Z! Welcome in, it's gonna be a more relaxed stream today, we're doing, we're doing work. This is, this is professional mode, I have to take pictures, I have to take videos, and then I have to pack what you ordered. Until, anything ever? Well, I am honored, it is me! Um, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna stream until like, probably 7:30, uh, after which, I am not leaving you guys on stream while I feed my dogs, I'll just, I'll just call it a day. Uh, but yeah, until then, I'm getting as much as I can, oh, hi! Hi Alex! Long time no see. Here. We're in ads, it's okay, I'mma wait. I'll wait. This package is sealed so fucking tight. Jesus Christ, man. Welcome, hi Yewena, I'm gonna wait until the ad finishes for everyone. To say my introduction and stuff. Let me know if I'm too far from the mic, I'm a little far right now cuz I'm, I'm fighting against a cardboard box. That is very well sealed. I don't, I don't know where to open this. I believe I found a weak point. Maybe? Oh my god! Why is it so hard? Oh, that's what I'm supposed to do, okay. Found it. Jesus. Okay, everyone should be back now, so today I'm doing a little bit of work, this is gonna be a short stream, uh, it is, it's currently, it's currently, no, 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 I got you, I stopped, I stopped, hello Z! Um, we are currently doing a little work session, I have to, I have to be off by 7:30, which is in two hours, so that is, as long as the stream will get, there's no extra long stream today. Um, but until then, I'll be, I'll be doing a little bit of packing order, packing pins, I was trying to figure out if I could get, if I, if I could do a hand cam stream for you guys. Uh, but unfortunately, I do not have the gear for that. Uh, I would have to give up on, I would have to give up on my, my, uh, stream deck or my, uh, model. But maybe, maybe in the future, if, if, um, if that would be something you're interested in, I'm, I'm down to do, uh, hand cam streams for packing, that would be fun. Playing peek with friends, but Vulcan blew up my laptop on launch. I've heard people have been having issues with Vulcan recently. Uh, so yeah, just a short work session, um, and I'm just gonna be talking to you guys here. We are productive today. Um. I have to pack, I have to pack pins for, um, I believe, Aruna River and, hmm. Shizu. Shizu and Aruna River, I believe it's, we got, how many? How many? It's about fifty, oh, my math is off, about sixty pins to pack, uh, and about, oh guys, not too bad, about forty orders, forty orders to, to send. Um. Alright, but I'm gonna start with the administrative stuff. You guys get to see me in my serious mode, ooh. Who would've thought? How is everyone? Do you guys have any plans for? Locked in, absolutely, do you have any plan for the weekend? Dude, I was gonna, I'm really, we're really struggling, oh, that's right, I forgot that, there's a, how do you pronounce that? I need to help, Umi cuts, oh, is Umi back? Is, is Umi gone? I can't, I forgot that was the convention, that I always forget how you're supposed to say it. You'll probably miss Miyaki cuz you're busy on Sunday. She is at the convention, so she needs you to cut clips this weekend, what a hardworking man you are. We got twenty-nine. Who is this? Are you Shizu or are you Aruna? Free Friday and Saturday. Wait, how long is the convention then? You don't make it in till Saturday night? I wish I had the brainpower to live my life more than one week at a time and plan to go to conventions. You know, that's me, I just tweeted on, I, I tweeted this morning on my, on my alt account, that I, I was getting crazy FOMO from seeing all these people posting about conventions and having fun and having their own booths and, but, but hopefully, hopefully in the future, uh, I have an option to do that. It is a little scary though cuz you know, it's like, for me especially, um, first of all, if it's about, if it's about the US, first of all, that shit scares the shit out of me. I would, I do not wanna be in that country, but, besides that, um, it's just kinda scary from a financial standpoint. Uh, cuz I don't know if I'm, if I'll be able to break even, I've asked, I've asked around, uh, some people that know, uh, about like selling merch at cons better than I do, uh, and they've told me I should be doing okay and I shouldn't have a problem breaking even, but you know, it's always the brain worms, okay, but I've never done it, so what if I don't? And then I travel and I feel incredibly unsafe and I don't even break even, and then I'm just sad and I'm sitting there like a loser with no money. And I'll miss my flight and I'll cry and I'll be stranded at the airport, oh! But you know, it's just my brain. I wanna spend irresponsibly on merch, I, I get that. Be excited to see Lea at a con, I'm scared of us, customs with luggage of merch, yeah, oh, US customs, yeah. Yeah, that, that shit would also be my ass, I'm sure, for sure. And like the whole administrative, like, side of things too because you know, I'm, I'm assuming, uh, I have to have a specific type of, or I was told I had to have a specific type of visa to be able to sell outside of my country, um. It's like, it's a little overwhelming to think about, it's like, on one end, I'm like, this would be super cool, right? Gets my name out there for, for people that wanna, you know, wanna buy my merch and maybe can't afford to do it online, gives them a chance to do that, and it's just cool, it's just cool to get to meet people, um, um, in real life, right, but, but it's so much work and it's so scary. My friend goes friend, I had their luggage, hi. How do I say your name? Is it Gil- Gi- Gildian? Gil? What are we gonna name you? I'm gonna name you G. That's as short as it gets. Gildian, well, I was right! That's what I said, no? Kinda? G works too. I like that you just caved. You can just set up a merch booth outside the airport if things go not so good. Right? You guys will, will come see me outside of the airport, that is super lame. Guys, I couldn't afford to go to the convention, so like, I'm here, and then you just share, uh, like a, a Google location. No? Damn, okay, it's cool, whatever, I wouldn't come see me either. Aruna is twenty-nine. Twenty-nine, um, mm-mm. Where is my thing? Um. Hang on, one second. Aruna. I did not make the thingy yet. Give me Uno Memento to read chat, hold on, I gotta type this before I forget. Twenty-nine and then this is, what do we say? Shizu. Shizu's twenty-seven. Okay. People are numbers! Okay, um, it saves on hotel costs cuz I can just fly over, buy merch and then leave. Oh, you're not in the US? Uh, to be fair, I think if I ever a booth internationally, I might try to do like a, a whole like around the world thing. You know, I, you know, I gotta see, it's, it's gonna be a long, it's a long time of planning ahead because you know, there's costs of everything, but it would be nice if I can just do like a, a year round, pretty much, yeah, like a world tour of like merch selling. That'd be cool, right? I can cover Lea board for Japan and Canada. I will feel so safe, dude, cuz I have a, I have a friend too, uh, that I would trust with my life, you know what, I would absolutely trust him with my life, I'm sure you guys, some of you guys know Kazuya, and he said, he's mentioned that he would help me if I, if I visit the US, and also Japan. If I'm between both of Yewena and Kazuya's hands, I, I, it's like both my parents, man, I would never feel, I could never feel safer. I would like to travel outside of the US one day, I'd like to visit my cousin in England, well, I've been in England before, in, in my high school years. Um, we'll feed you so well, oh, I bet. Hi Dante! Hmm, okay, so, I'm gonna take one out. Right? Wouldn't it be cool, and then you know what I can do? I could do like one of these like graphics that looks like I'm doing like a concert world tour, except I'm selling merch instead. Maybe it's just funny to me, but you know, my mom always told me, you gotta be your first biggest fan. Hard to believe you're not American, you've got a cheeseburger on your hoodie? Well, I'm just fat. I hope, I hope this helps. I like food, man! My, uh, will, so my partner, uh, says that I make, I make really good burgers. He's the cook, by the way, he's a cook, he's the one that cooks at home and he has like professional experience in cooking, but he says that my burgers are good, I'll take it! Um, okay, sure, twenty-seven and, twenty-seven is Shizu, twenty-seven is Shizu. Let me label. Let me get everything out. What? Wait, she sent me? No, oh my god! But now I have to pay her, what? Are you joking? Oh my goodness. My manufacturer sent me, I reached out to her cuz I wanted butterfly clutches to send to people in case they lose, they lose theirs and also some for me, so I can, um, so I can like secure them on my, on my display. And I told her I couldn't afford to buy them yet because, because this month is a little rough, um, with money, so I was gonna do it next month, but she already sent them. My manufact-, guys, my manufacturer is my match made in heaven, I am so happy with them. They're really nice, they're very considerate, not, like not a perfect yield cuz that's really hard to achieve. Uh, they're pretty affordable as well and it's just, it's just been an absolute pleasure to work with them, they keep me updated, they try to improve my product and like, you know, taking, like, taking account my feedback and, it's so nice, you're stuck at work. It's okay, not much longer. Hey, they're super nice, um, let me just, what the hell? Oh, she is an absolute gem. May she be blessed with everything she needs, dude. I was about to fucking cry, man, I got, one of my parcels came in, uh, in late July and it had, I was like, what is this? There's like a little package in the middle of all of the like, uh, pins, right? And so I opened it and I'm like, maybe it's like replacement pins for like the ones that broke or something, and I open it, tell me why, it's a little charm with a birthday card and then she hand wrote something along the lines of like, I'm so sorry I missed your birthday, mind you, she had no way of knowing that it was my birthday, she had to look at my tweets and, um, and she sent me a birthday card and she was like, I'm very sorry, I, I missed your birthday, but we bought you this little gift, and it's like, it's this little bracelet thing that now I have on my purse. Anyways, I am weak to small, uh, gestures, so, I almost cried. Um, twenty-nine, you know, it's the, it's the extra mile for me, cuz she could just be doing her job like really well and just, you know, I'd be happy with that, this is, this is all I'm asking for, she's a professional, I'm asking her to deliver a good service, but it's the fact that she goes the extra mile to make sure I'm happy and then a fucking birthday card and a birthday gift, oh! But yeah, needless to say, one of the things that I did not expect going into merch is that there's a very large volume, mostly when you're doing enamel pins, there's a large volume of manufacturers that reach out to you. Um, you know, that's how they make business, I don't really mind. Um, but I'm trying to stick to one for the volume that I sell right now, I, I don't think it makes sense for me to have more than one. And yeah, it's gonna be the day, i- if, if the day ever comes that I need more than one to like, uh, make, you know, keep up with, uh, the volume that I'm selling, it's gonna be really hard to find one that matches this quality of service. I'm glazing them right now, but they deserve it, I wanna let you know that they absolutely deserve it. Um. Twenty-eight for Aruna and thirty-four. And we said what? Aruna. I need to take notes, bro, I can't do this. I cannot do this, okay. Um. Oh my god. Here. And I said, thirty-four, this is Shizu. Twenty-seven. That's twenty. And, I can do this, this too, twenty-seven and twenty-seven, okay. Okay. And now I need my little two labels. That was amazing, hmm? What was? I made a sound? I didn't know, okay, I, I trust you. I don't know what sounds I make when I, I do this all the time, man, I'll, I'll just be making sounds of either music that's in my head. I'm not crazy, or just music that I'm listening to. These songs make me happy, the name of this playlist is, uh, No Thoughts, Head Empty Nintendo Music. It's great. Twenty-seven, this is Shizu. I love the smell of Sharpies. Is that just me? Bro, I be sniffing that shit. When I was a kid, bro, I had a fucking problem, man, I still do it, but obviously not as crazy as I did when I was a kid, but when I was a kid, I would just sometimes just get a whiff of Sharpie, like, I, I just, I needed it, man, I don't know how to. Is that weird? Really, it's not, right? It smells so nice. In my opinion, they have no business smelling so nice if they were meant to be, you know, sniffed. I don't know how to feel about Sharpie sniffing, dude, I, I, I really like, oh, you know what? Are you more sensitive to textures or are you more sensitive to smells? I think I'm more sensitive to textures. But I do really like smells too. I just feel like smells, I, I might have a lot of negative reaction, a lot more negative reactions than I would with, um, I come, I send a chair, I leave because it's late, I have a good stream. Sounds good, thank you for dropping by! Off topic, I heard Zenoblade Chronicles music and my eyes widened. Is this a Zenoblade? I'll be honest, I've listened to this playlist so much, oh, it is! I just know all the songs, but not where they come from. It is a nice song though. I don't even know what Zenoblade is, is it like a, is it like a RPG? JRPG, okay. Yeah, my, my childhood, I'm assuming this is old, my childhood, uh, games were Final Fantasy, Golden Sun, uh, Age of Mythology, oh, that shit was nice, I was ass at it, absolute garbage. But it was fun, I liked it. Um, always been a big Zelda fan, but I watched my brother play more than I played cuz I was, I was a little scared. Um. What else? What else is there? Um, I can't think of anything right now, but I like games. You know, I have a really cute picture of me as a baby, sitting on my brother's la- he was sitting on the floor and I was like, sitting like between his legs as a little fat chunky baby, and he was making me hold the controller, uh, he was holding the controller above my hands cuz obviously I was just trying to press buttons and failing horribly, uh, and then he just fed me biscuits. I was just a fat little gamer! But the picture is really cute! Yeah, that's why I was saying, uh, I was saying last stream, my brother, uh, my brother showed up in chat and I was talking about like little stories and, um, uh, there was one involving the fact that he's, he, he's once told me when I was younger that he initially wanted a little brother, but then he was fine with me cuz I'm essentially a guy. Where I act like one or whatever. And, and you know, a little awkward, the delivery was a little cheeks, but it was very cute despite the horrible delivery. Um, but this is partially why, I think he just always treated me as a little brother regardless. 34. So I'm gonna have to do these two. Uh... Uh... 29. And then 29 here. That's 40! Oh, she is 28. Okay. Okay, and these two are... This is nice, you know, I don't hate that. Little bit of work session and then being on stream kinda forces me to focus on things. But I still get to be distracted by chat, so I don't have to be fully locked in. You know, sometimes I think about it, I'm like, I'm so used to multitasking and like getting distracted, that it's become a part of like, me being productive, to the point where if I'm, if I don't do all that, I feel like I'm slower. But sometimes, I think back and I'm like, can you imagine if I could like work at 100% of my power, how fucking fast I would be? Cuz like, ever since I've been in school, uh, studying like video game and stuff, uh, I've always focused on being efficient. That's like a everyday life thing. I like things to be efficient. Um... Not, not rushed, but you know, just I don't wanna waste time on like tiny details that don't matter. Unless they matter, but yeah. And so sometimes I'm like... Damn, I'd be crazy if I could just focus! But I'm, I'm, yeah. I guess part of being efficient, in my book, uh, became multitasking and doing a lot of things at the same time, cuz it makes me feel like I'm doing a lot, since now I, I can, I can actually like do it, you know, in a way that lets me get things done. But realistically, I don't know. Maybe if I just focused on one task, then I'd be crazy fast, but this is... Good for thoughts. Maybe I'll never know the answer. I am also just okay with how I work right now. Okay, into the box you go! Oh, I have to count, so 20. This is 20. Shizu. 60. Uh... 60, 80, 102. Minus one. 67. Okay, and then for Aruna, 20 and 20. Shake, shake! Nope, that's not Aruna. 28. Why is she... oh! 12 and... Well, it's not very smart now, is it? 10 plus, what is that? 2? So 12, 32. Wait, 20, 20? Huh? 20, 40, 60, 70. Oh, I ordered 70, okay. 72. 29, 43. 43? Hey! It feels really nice when I see myself improving in something. I'm, uh, I'm trying my best to be like, to stay as organized as I can be for my merch. Uh, and learning about things like SKU and whatnot. Those will be that. Don't know what that is, cuz I didn't know until very recently. It's basically, it's, it's a number that helps you keep track of inventory. Uh, so if you're selling on multiple platforms or multiple, you know, places, the SKU lets you keep track of like general inventory. So you know how much is left overall. And so for someone like me, that sells in like multiple, uh, online stores, this is really nice. But I didn't do it before cuz I thought this was like a big store thing. And I had no business doing that, but I guess it makes sense and I should've started doing it. I haven't yet, but at least I know of it! Okay! So this, and then I got my two boxes. Um... We got about an hour left, so I think an hour gives me enough time to do... Look who it is! Bestie! And then I need to do this. I'm doing merch stuff! I got, I ended up getting my package. I was a little worried I wouldn't get it in time, cuz I, I had to pay, uh, tax to, to get it out of customs and I paid it a little late. Cuz I'm poor and... And, uh, they released my package like the same day. And then it got delivered the same day. I, I figured because I paid it a little late, uh, they would like delay it. But then, no, they did not. I think that we're gonna deliver me anyways. And just like, push me to pay. La, 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 la. And, and I just realized, but that signs the end of, uh, wave one. Once I'm done with this... We are almost done. And then, yeah, that will be the end of the first wave of wiggle pins. Took, uh, almost a year! Almost a year. Why, why is... huh? Why are you not starting? Uh-oh! No! I think my lightbox is dead! Oh! Oh, god. Great! Well, that's a little awkward. That is a little awkward. My lightbox has given, uh, up. The problem is, I don't have a flashlight. I don't know how I'm gonna... I don't know how I'm gonna do this. I need light to come from the inside. What is wrong with... oh, the cable is dead, isn't it? Aw, man! No! This sucks cuz I, I don't think I can buy one this month. Ow! Oh, no! And I, oh... This is the one, uh! This is the one that I bought, there's no way. Oh, hell no, it's not. Well, I guess I could, uh... I guess I could. There's like cheap ones. What is wrong with your mute? Why are you bugging? Go away. Excuse me? Lightbox. Okay, well... Hi, bestie! Everybody's my bestie. Okay, I'll buy this later. Are you guys playing Battlefield? Can I be worstie? Sure. You may be my worstie. Ah, this is so lame! I'll see if I can... I'll see if I can buy this anytime sooner. 27. Not really playing anything right now. You working? Let's go! Waiting on a friend to get on Helldivers. Damn, I have not heard of that game in a while. Helldivers, huh? Why does my thing say excellent? Thank you, but what is excellent? He wants to farm for the Halo collab. Oh. Aishii. You know what? Maybe this is worth taking out of savings for, cuz this takes a few days to get delivered. I feel like I don't, I shouldn't wait. Hmm... Yeah, it's okay. We'll put batting, I'm gonna note it down and we're gonna put it back in savings in it, next month. Eh? What? Wait, what? No, wait! Um... To... This. Eh, no, maybe this is silly, actually. This, to this. Can somebody... You know, if you guys have time, would somebody explain to me the credit system of, of cards in the US? I don't get it. People, I was trying to read something about, somebody was tweeting about their credit score and how they were keeping a, a card active so that they would, they wouldn't lose money? But they went to another bank or something? I don't understand. What, what's a credit score? Okay, so no pictures, so I guess I start packing then. Um... Credit score is like a grading system for your financials. Based on what? Like what you spend or what, like, what? You build up your score by paying bills, loans, etc. on time. It's like how reliable the bank thinks you are, so they let you take out bigger loans and stuff if they like you. Oh, cuz I saw people talking about when they, when they stop using a card or they close their account and their credit score is lost. So it's not a global thing? If you just stack up on credit score and then you stop using one bank, and then, then you lose all that work? And they're not gonna tell another bank that you're reliable? It doesn't work like that? Why? Like, why wouldn't it be global? It is global? Banks don't control it. Now I'm lost. If it's global, why do you lose it if you, if you stop going to one bank? I thought it was global for banking? Maybe like closing lines is seen as bad, so your score goes down? No, no, cuz they were saying, it's not just goes down. They were saying they lost all the, the cred- all their credit score that they accumulated at that bank. That's not how I understand it to work? Maybe I read it wrong, but I don't know. So it is global. You don't just lose it? Unless they file for bankruptcy or something, maybe that's what they mean, cuz that ruins your credit score. Okay. Huh! Strange. Strange. Let's try to pre-pack. At least 20. Really that's doable. Can you guys hear the... Like, the paper and the plastic stuff? Is this Loki in a ASMR streaming? Hardly? Probably good. My least favorite part is removing staples. Sometimes they just fly off in the distance and then I step on them later, like, two days later. Do we do 5x5 or do we do 10x10? Uh... Why does it do 5? I want to get Shoyu, guys. These are so cute. This is the theme song of Hika trying to explain something to me and I don't understand after the seventh time. I love silly songs, man. I miss my Animal Crossing days. You know, I came to the crushing realization that I think I'm growing old. Cuz you know games like Animal Crossing, even Zelda, I find myself like, being like, "Well..." I don't know if I really wanna, like, put the time in. And I used to love these games. I used to get super excited and be like, "Oh my god, I can't wait to just not, like, stop living and spend every second of my life just playing that game." But now I'm like, "Man, this looks cool." And then I'm like, "I don't know if I should play it, though." And then it makes me sad. Game goes for, like, Pokemon. I'm so old, bro, what the hell? I suppose it's fine. It is still and will forever be good memories. Well, we have an ad starting in 4 minutes. My knees crack when I squat down and I still play Pokemon. Yeah. For me, it's not even a matter of, like, these games are no longer fun for me. They still are. But it's more of a matter of, like, okay, but if I play, I know I'm gonna have to play like 17 hours before I feel like I accomplished even half of what I wanna do. And like, do I wanna trade these 17 hours for, you know, all the work or all the, I don't know, like, even chores or like, just like, productive things I could be doing instead of just sitting here and playing a game? Even if I really like it? I don't know, man. And then sometimes I'm like, "Am I lame?" Like... We're just becoming a known fart. These what it is. I'll live vicariously through my kids when I have them. Time management priorities. Does it make me money? Dude, "Does it make me money?" is a big thing for me, dude. It's kinda crazy. Sometimes I'm just like, "This looks super fun, but I could be making money right now." But I try to like... You know, I try to keep that same energy cuz you know, obviously, it helps with staying productive and making sure you're not taking stupid decisions. At the same time, I try not to be so hard on myself with that cuz it's, well, it's unhealthy. You know, let's be honest. Not the best mindset to have. Can confirm if ever peak, we followed the leader and three of us died? Damn! See? That would never be me cuz as a leader, I will be sure to die first for my friends. You know Dante that we played together with yesterday? He says he has the... He fell for it! He has the itch now. He wants to play more. We have another hour. Okay, you know what? I'm gonna try to speedrun this. Maybe we get one game of TFT in before I end. Cuz I don't think I'll get more than these 20 pins pre-packed before the end of stream. How's the work progress? It's okay. I'm a little sad about the lightbox thing cuz I really wanted to do that this week. Uh, but I just took out of savings and I bought a cheap new one. Um... But yeah, hopefully that one survives. I might have to find a different, like, place to store it in cuz I suspect the cable is what died. Uh, and unfortunately, it's not like, uh... I can't, like, detach it, so I can't even replace just the cable. Eh, but yeah. It's partially my fault cuz I put it... The first time I put it in a place where the puppies had access to. Um, and I think, uh, one day when we were gone, they got it out and this might be what damaged the cable in... It has, it seems it has been his, its last moments. Should be getting it by next week, though. I placed the order, so... And then, yeah, I just need to stay on top of my accounting. Make sure I refill what I took out of savings this month and... I'll be okay! Thank you! Gotta head out. Uh, it's currently 9:30 PM. I got work in the morning. Your art is awesome and have fun. Thank you! Thank you so much for hanging out. You have a good night and good luck with work tomorrow. Hello, Mr. Pregnant! Yeah, I'll be okay. Altogether, I'm pretty proud of this year, financially speaking. I've stayed on top of most things despite having a lot of... A lot of unexpected, uh, things happening. But... So far, we're pulling through. Hopefully, it could stay that way until the end of the year. But if not, you know, at least I had a very successful start and half of the year, so... This is good enough for me. You're still not used to me calling you that. You know what it is? For me, Hellscythe doesn't roll off the door. I hate the word "scythe", I'll be honest with you. I don't know why. It's very hard for me to pronounce. Like, I have to think about it. And I don't like that. I don't wanna think! So... Pregnant, I don't have to think. Just came back from ads to hear you say "Pregnant"? That's Hellscythe. He is Mr. Pregnant. Not me! I'm not pregnant! Dude, you know what? I do want kids, so whenever I am pregnant, I hope... I cannot wait to see my dog's reactions. Congratulations! It's me, Mr. Fertility Lion Man. Damn, shit. Lions are so cute, dude. Like, lions trying to... Oh, I got a call from Will. Hang on. Attard un seconde. Hold on, I'm muting. Well! I got horrible news! Oh, wait, my headset turned off. Um... My... Hang on. It seems, uh, the tariffs went through, uh, and, uh, well, that I knew, but what I didn't know is that it's gonna affect my ability to send, um, packages to the US apparently. Uh, from Monday onwards, they, my post office is no longer delivering to the US. And, um, my, my fucking preorder campaign. I don't know. I, this is terrible. This is fucking terrible because if I have to cancel out every US order, I'm pretty sure like pretty much nothing is funded then. And, uh, I was kind of relying on, uh, sales for like everything? Like bills and shit, so this is, uh, this is a lot of work going to waste if I just have to like call it off entirely. I'm gonna have to like reach out. I don't know, I don't know what the fuck I'm gonna do. Can you send it over to Canada and we send it to the, to the States? It's the same for you guys though. You have to do a bunch of, Hika told me you have, you have to do a bunch of paperwork and stuff. Um, well. But that is such short notice. Like I literally have a fucking package sent, sitting on my desk that I have to send to the US and because they're, they're interrupting it on Monday, then I, oh, this is bad. I don't even know if that one's gonna go through. Thankfully, I, I haven't spent, I froze all the money that I got, the partial payment money that I got from pre-orders, so. If, it's not, it's not about refunding people, although that hurts, but it's not about refunding people or anything, but. Um, I don't know. Because I already checked like other carriers for, or prices and it's like a time stand. Uh, time stand, uh, increase, which makes zero sense. I'm not gonna charge people fucking 60 euro, like triple the price of a pin. For just shipping. Oh my god, this is horrible. Okay, well, I'm gonna finish, uh, packing this and then I'm gonna call it off and I'm gonna look into it, see what I do with the campaign. No, but I think the, the tariff update is like very recent. Uh, might have not been bad before. Yeah. Ah, dude. Well, this is, uh, that's a fucking bummer. Oh my god, dude, that's actually kinda terrifying because I, I focused so much of my energy into merch this month, uh, like if this, if this doesn't go through, uh, this is horrible. Is there an, I don't know what to do, dude. Is there any chance that this gets reversed? Like can I just reach out to people and give them an option to cancel or just, you know, have potentially very increased delay on their package? Like what the fuck do I do here? I'm trying to delay in a while and see. Hairs have been kind of flip flop. Yeah. Well, shit. Like even these pre-orders, man. Because what I'm packing right now goes to the US as well. If they don't, they say it's effective Monday, but if they just don't pick up the, the packages today, then I'm fucking, I'm screwed. They don't work on Sunday and they're not gonna do it on Monday either, so that means. Okay, well, I think, I'm very sorry. I think this is gonna be where I end stream. This is, uh, this is a little too worrying for me to be doing this right now. I'm gonna go and figure out what I could do and then reach out to people. Um, I'll be back when I'm back. Um, probably not today. Um, but yeah. Uh, thank you guys for hanging out and I hope you have a great rest of your weekend. Bye bye.